At seven o'clock, I'd like to call the planning commission for the city of Martinsville, Tuesday, October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. First up on the agenda is Roll Call.
Richard Bastin.
Here.
Steve Bodie.
Here.
Jim Burkhart.
Here.
Joe Disney.
Present.
Richard Durnall.
Present.
Rick Keacock.
Here.
Ann Miller.
Okay, we have a forum. Presentation of minutes, does everybody have an opportunity to look at the minutes over?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, on page two, under Old Business, number two, docket number two-five-zero-two-four, the motion says that Steve Bodie made a motion to table the request of PC two-five-zero-two-four until further information is obtained. The motion was seconded by Ann Miller and passed with nine votes in favor, one opposed. I believe that motion was actually to approve as submitted. I made the second and it did pass nine to one.
Yes, and if I remember right, Steve, you made some verbiage in there on that. Do you remember what it was?
I do not.
So did you get that, Mary Ellen?
Well, I don't know what's missing, what was missing.
So on number two, docket twenty-five oh twenty-four, the motion, Steve Bodie made a motion to accept. And he put some language in that as to the specifics of what they could and could not do. And then Ann Miller.
It was for the payment.
Yes, it was for the front, the side of the. And. And Steve, you made the motion on that and Rick seconded the motion. Instead of Ann Miller, it's Rick Durnall seconded the motion.
Thank you, Rick.
Have you got that?
Yep.
Okay, is there anything else in the minutes? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five with the noted change.
Ann Miller is here.
Okay.
I'll second.
Who is that?
Jim Burkhart.
All right, thank you.
Okay, up under Old Business, docket number PC two-five-zero-one-seven, final P U D, final detailed plans, address Artisan Avenue, ten point five one two acres, owner is Habitat for Humanity of Warden County. I see we got Brian back here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from any discussion of voting on this petition because I was actively working with Habitat at the beginning of this.
Okay. Did you get that, Mary Ellen?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Brian Donahue with T and H Investments. What I passed out was really just a copy of what was submitted, just so everybody could have it. So when I was here last in September, we had, you know, gone into a more detailed review of the project. And it was, it was tabled for pending, you know, a more extensive review by the commission. And then there were also a few items that had been brought to, brought up at that meeting that we have, I think, since addressed in the plans that were submitted earlier this month. So we'll probably through those now. The first item that had been discussed was fencing on the site, really pertaining to three separate areas. The first was fencing around the playground. So we did add that in. What we had proposed and the sort of standard detail for it is included in the packet was doing a four-foot aluminum picket-style fence around the playground. And that would be, we probably do a black fence, that would be the preferred choice there. The second area that we had discussed, well, we discussed it for a number of reasons, but was the drainage pond. And as was pointed out and I confirmed afterwards is that these are wet ponds. And as such, you know, I think there's a desire by everybody to have them fenced. So we, we added fencing around both the drainage ponds. That would be a four-foot tall chain link fence. Again, it would be a powder-coated black color. And that detail is attached as well. And then the last area that had been discussed a little bit and really was just, I think, a point of clarification is that there is intended to be a fenced-in area just outside of the daycare. But it had not been called out on the plans, so we did call that out on the plans. That was the fencing. The second, the second item that was discussed was snow plowing of the, the public drive, which is the section of the road running from Artisan Ave to the, to the, really to the property line for, for what will be the thirty-four townhomes. We had discussed at the last meeting the idea of, of the property owner taking, taking responsibility for the plowing. That's something I discussed internally with, with people in my office and we feel comfortable doing that. In terms of what I included in the packet, the last item in the packet is, I'll say the draft commitment letter, but a commitment letter from us saying that we, we would take care of, of the snow plowing for that stretch of road, you know, and I propose to what I believe are the, the city standards of, of, you know, any snowfall greater than two inches. The reality of, of it is that we will likely do it pretty much in any snowfalls, at least, at least, you know, salting that kind of thing, just, just because the, the reality of running, you know, being a manager of, of an apartment community requires a higher level of due diligence, just from a liability perspective. So that, that is included in the packet. And then the last item, there had been a lot of discussion about the staging for the property. And one thing, you know, I, I don't think there was any conclusions at, at the last meeting, but I did propose in my, in my submission, the idea of, of setting the staging up so after we were done our major site work, which is things like, you know, all utilities are in, the roadways are into at least a binder, of course, that kind, you know, things are stabilized. Curbs and, curbs and things, things like that are in. The idea that at that point, the site would be ready for Habitat to, to come and start construction on, on their houses. And that would be, I guess, my request, if, if there is any, 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 any language in, in the approval about staging is that we would, we would have the ability for Habitat to start after the, after the site was completed. So those were, those were the things that I, I believe I addressed in, in the submission. And obviously, are there any questions or comments that the commission may have?
How many total acres is this again, that this is going to be on?
Approximately ten acres.
Ten acres?
It's actually, I'm sorry, I believe it is. It's the, the whole property, including the undeveloped site, is ten acres. So the undeveloped site is about two acres.
The description here, Brian, says ten point five one two acres.
Correct. And that is the whole parcel, including the, the undeveloped piece.
And in conjunction to Hannah Farms, this will be to, what, the north, north of it? No?
It is, I believe it is to the west.
To the west of it, okay.
So Brian, I have a question for you. On the, and I think that Mr. Burkhart was alluding to this last month. Who would be owning the townhomes? And your reply was T and H Investments, correct?
So a simple purpose entity controlled by T and H Investments.
Okay, okay. In the original, this is going back to February, in the original proposal that we was handed, it stated in your lease-to-purchase program. Now, I've never heard that brought up again.
Yes, so.
So is this a, a workforce development?
It is, it is.
Is this Section Eight?
No, it is purely rental housing. However, there is the ability for, and it's, it doesn't happen much, but there would be the ability for potentially after fifteen years for a tenant that was, that was, had resided in there the whole time to, to purchase their, their particular apartment. It has been a very strict set of requirements for that to happen.
What we also got in February, talked, and there was some figures in here. Income restriction, income limits, thirty to eighty percent of AMI, eighty percent AMI for a family of four. So is this market rate? Or is these rates that we was given in February still good?
No, it, this is all, will also be income restricted to the maximum of eighty percent of AMI.
So that moves along with workforce development?
Correct.
So have you ever had any buying purchase for any urban properties?
No, I mean, I'll be honest with you, the, the, I think the unfortunate reality of it is is that the success rate of, this is, this is one of the options that numerous states put out there. The success rate of that, of that is pretty low because of the fact that you have to have, has to be somebody who originally occupied the unit and had lived there for, for at least fifteen years. And then they have to obviously have the, you know, the means and the ability to, to purchase it.
Who did Habitat Pre-Manity buy this property from?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yes, we bought it from Hannah Farms.
Joe said they bought it from Hannah Farms.
So also, another question I have. In our February packet, it shows sources and uses.
Yep.
Sources, permanent loan, development loan, ready, Habitat, seller note, syndication proceeds, owner contribution, total sources.
Yep.
Now, my question is, this ready grant, that is a city provided? The city applied for the ready grant?
That's correct.
Have you checked with the city to see that with what you pulled back on this, that the ready grant is still available?
The last I checked, yes, it was still available.
And that was eight hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct, that's what I'm showing here. Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
What kind of timeline is there for that grant to be put in place? And, and by the time that you, you know, if you started building, that you received the monies to continue to get everything built? Do you know what the timeline is on that grant?
I, I don't specifically know. We would expect to, so we, we close all our financing together. So we would expect to, you know, close up the loan documents and stuff for the grant. At that point, when we actually draw down the funds would be a discussion with, you know, the, the, the city and, and making sure it aligns with, with, with whatever their expectations are from when they would get it from the state.
Does anybody from the city know, by chance?
I have no follow-up.
Gary, Gary, you can't talk. You have a conflict here. You can sit and listen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Chairman, I've been in conversation with the ready participants. There's some concern of way things have been changed from their February and the application we made to the grant on this project. And their funding, if, if they agree to go ahead and do this with changes within May, their funding will not be available until maybe sometime next year, at this time next year. So the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't something that we have control over. It's, it's government money going through the ready program. So therefore, we were told last third meeting would not be available till fall or next year.
That, that seems pretty typical from what I've seen with other projects.
Okay.
And so that won't have any effect on your project?
No, so we, we, ultimately, we get, there's two primary sources of funding during construction. So some of it is the tax credit equity. We get that coming in chunks. And the main, the main source of it is a construction loan that we have a commitment for. And we take into account that, that information into the size of the construction loan to make sure that there's sufficient funding.
Okay.
On your website, there's a section about TIF bonding. Is that anything that's happening with this project?
No.
Do we have any more questions for mine?
I just have one for Mr. Mills, if he's available to talk. Yes, hi, Mr. Mills. Happy birthday, by the way.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. How did you come to, to find out about this acreage, this, this Hannah Farms? Did they approach you or what? How, how did you?
We had someone that went to church with the owner and connected us.
And do you see this, how do you see this benefiting our community?
Well, as we've talked many times, for all of the housing needs that there are in this county and specifically in Martinsville, the greatest deficit we have is housing that's affordable to a workforce that, quite frankly, don't make livable wages in many of the jobs. They are residents of our community. They are vital to our community. And at this point in time, they're being crushed by market rate housing because they just can't afford it. And I could go into story after story after story of what happens in that situation. But it's a deficit. And right now, this is a project that addresses that deficit.
And you say addresses it because it's going to be, the, the rental rate will be lower than the normal rental rate in town, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And it's scaled according to, if you'll notice, that there are three tiers in that, in that little set of, of apartment units, at thirty, fifty, and eighty percent of the area median income. That lets us address a broad population that's, that's in need of affordable housing.
And we talked about this before, but how many Habitat houses do we have in this city right now?
I think thirty, we're building the thirty-ninth, I believe.
We have thirty-nine?
We have thirty-eight now. We're building the thirty-ninth.
Okay. Okay, the other municipalities in the county have how many?
They have the rest. We've, we've built fifty-nine. We're building our sixtieth Habitat home now.
You've built fifty-nine, so that means twenty is.
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
I might add that at this point in time, we hold just nineteen mortgages. The rest of those homes have been paid off.
Of the thirty-nine?
Of the sixty?
Yeah.
Oh, the fifty-nine, okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. So we'd like to have a conversation here before I call for motion. Feelings? Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak for or against this project? Okay.
Joe, the only thing, I'm, I'm going to go back and, and, I mean, you, I'll give you, you've jumped through every hoop we've asked. You jumped through that, and I appreciate that.
That's what we do.
And I appreciate that. You know, back in this, was, we were approached and, and I go back, I had the same thing you did.
Yes, sir.
And, and that, you know, we, we, in this city, we need affordable housing. I'll go along with that. And, but we need people to own the homes. And, and so that was one of the good things I saw that you, you brought to the table was that this was going to be, you know, there was a lease-to-purchase plan. And I, I think that was kind of, we didn't really get the. And I, I think that was kind of, we didn't really get the full scope of what that entailed. Yeah, and so I, I'm kinda disappointed in that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, I think, I think as a, just as an industry as a whole, it's a, it's a difficult thing to do, and...
Yeah, it was...
Structure, structure, creating a better structure would be something that, you know, I think there would be a lot of support for, because it's, I go a lot of places and I understand the importance of homeownership and, right?
So that was, that's my...
And, and going along with that, when Ms. Andrews presented this to us in February, you know, we had all parcels being used, now we're losing one parcel. The daycare housing, fifty kids, now we're down to twenty-four to twenty-eight, that's been taken off. Just things to consider.
I'd, I'd like to, first of all, I wanna say that the concept of this whole program is absolutely great. I, I really do believe that that is what we do need, is affordable housing within, within our, within our town. But along with Jim is that I think you need to have people with ownership of it to take pride in what they have, because not all the time renters do. And that's just an unfortunate, sad fact. So, when this first came to us, this was probably one of the best presentations I've seen come in front of us in order to help people have affordable housing, get them into ownership, you know, we have, there was a lot of great things as far as a daycare available that would house probably enough for what was going to move in. But unfortunately, like I said, I, I think it's a great concept, I don't like this concept of what, and I appreciate everything that you've brought to the table, I don't like this concept of us just taking a project and just, let's see how little we can make it and shove it in and make it work. So, um, I make a motion that we deny the plan, um, for, sorry, docket, um, PC two-five-oh-seventeen, um, as it, as it, uh, to, uh, I, I, I make a motion that we deny it based on it's just too condensed and too much change of what the great plan was.
And I will second that, uh, just because I, I just feel that this is not what the city needs in this particular area at this time.
So we have a motion from Rich Bastin to deny, and Miller has seconded it.
What was your reasoning, Anne, Anne, I didn't get it?
It's not what's needed in this area.
Oh, okay.
With that, Marilyn, I would like to call for a rule call vote on this.
Sure.
So, as she calls, a yes is that you're wanting to deny, and as a no is that you don't agree with the denial.
Benny?
Benny.
Richard Bastin?
Yes.
Steve Brock? Oh wait, you were accused, right? Jim Burkhart?
No.
Joe Disney?
Yes.
Rick Dernall?
No.
Caleb Flores, right here. Rick Keacock?
No.
Ann Miller? Yes. Jason Scott?
No.
Steve Bodie abstained.
Uh, yeah, I got that.
And Marilyn, your vote?
Yeah, myself is, um, yes.
Okay, so what we have is a four to four tie. Normally, this would go back on the agenda for the next month's meeting, however, we have local rules that state that action has to be taken on an item by the planning commission within ninety days of the date that it first came before the commission. This first came before the commission for this particular request in June, it got tabled a couple of times, so we're out of our ninety-day timeframe. So at this point, it will not be put back on the agenda, it will die for lack of a affirmative vote.
Okay.
Can they get it back another time?
No.
No.
So docket number PC two-five-zero-one-seven has died and timed out. So it cannot be brought back before the planning commission.
Can it be brought back if it's modified?
You can bring it back if it's modified, you'll have to do a new application, you have to wait thirty days, but you could bring back a modification of it, yes.
Is there, can I ask the question, is there specific modifications that some of the...
You're not gonna be able to ask the question of the commission tonight, no.
What's that?
You're not gonna be able to ask, ask the commission for any opinions tonight, no.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. Next up on old, under old business, docket number PC two-five-zero-two-six, an amended application to rezone from B-two to R-two to R-three, address twelve oh-nine South Main Street, twelve sixty-nine South Main Street, eleven ninety South Maryland Street. Owner is Swab Family Associates, Swab Food Liner and Corporate, and William and Helen Swab Foundation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wanna recuse myself, Miss Allen, for personal reasons.
Okay, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment just to, to, um, say what I think our job is? And I, the reason I'd like to say that is because I believe there are people in the audience who are here who are interested in, in this, um, docket number and this petition. I just wanted to emphasize that our job as a planning commission is land use, that's what our role is, or to recommend to the city council whether they should rezone this lot or not. We recommend to the city council, and the city council ultimately then decide. We do land use decisions. We're supposed to do that in a consistent manner and not randomly, not based on who we know or our friends, but consistent, not random, and in compliance with our comprehensive plan, that's a big statement. It's a, a guiding principle that we as a planning commission are supposed to be aware of and apply to requests like the one that's in front of us today. How do we decide? We're supposed to look at adjacent properties to determine if it's compatible, does it fit in, how would it impact the neighborhood? Would it affect the value of neighbors' land? Would it hinder the ability to use the existing properties near it in the way that they are right now? Additionally, we're supposed to pick the highest and best use for this property, the property in question. We're supposed to review what the comprehensive plan says about that area and the desire for how we grow as a community. We're supposed to look at the current conditions, what's now happening, what is there now, including the neighborhood and, and the properties near it. We're supposed to conserve property values. And we're responsible for the development and growth, as long as the, the, um, planning commission allows for the change of, of views. So I just wanted to share that, that is what we are supposed to be doing up here. So I'll give it back to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bodie. Would you please state your name?
Mike Gosssett with Rudolph Oaks Construction.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Mike Gosssett.
Did you spell that last name?
G-O-S-S-E-T-T.
Okay, thank you.
So last month, um, when I was here and we had to put it off to this month, there were some, uh, the zoning codes that we used in the public notice was incorrect. We made the corrections the week following last month's meeting, sent the notice back out with the correct, uh, zoning codes in there. So everyone is currently, um, was provided the information with the correct zoning that we made the mistake on initially, so.
Do we need to confirm that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Attorney?
Got everything. So what you're looking at is one, two, three, four, five, six lots that you're wanting to rezone?
It's actually five lots, sir.
Oh, I stand corrected, yes. Five lots that you're wanting to change from B-two retail to R-three high-density residential.
Three of them are from B-two to R-three, and two of them are from R-two to R-three.
Okay. Do we have any questions for this gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, just for the board's information, I met with Mr. Goss along with Mr. Strater. I wanted to, uh, make sure in my mind I understood the overall concept of what the request was going to be, so, um, tonight, he's asking for a recommendation to the city council to rezone these five parcels to R-three. And then, once that is acted upon, assuming that the council does agree to rezone, he will have to come back before this board because he's going to ask to vacate and replat these lots, okay? So some of the, um, documentation that you received both last meeting and also in your packet this evening, kinda shows some rendering of some of these finished apartments. That's only after that vacate and replat would happen, okay? Because he's gonna be having to build over property lines that he can't do right now the way it's configured without a replat, all right? So this is a process that he is going through, uh, but the first step is to seek the rezoning. So, just a little bit of edification for you folks as to where they're at with their project.
So, clarification now, you're, you're saying that there's like, three lots here and you're making it one lot, so it's how...
That'll be the overall when they're finished, yes. Exactly.
All, I give, we'll look at, take these individual lots, combine them into one, yes, sir, and then take these three lots, combine them into one.
And again, that's on down the road, tonight is just the request for consideration on whether to recommend rezoning to the city council.
And this is nothing new, we've done this before, we did it with Culvers.
Yeah, and it makes, it makes that different from what they're planning on doing at this point.
Right, right. All we're doing, like Dale said, is we're just looking at sending a favorable or non-favorable recommendation to city council. And even if we do an unfavorable, they can still take it to city council. So all we're doing tonight is just favorable or unfavorable recommendation for city council to change the zoning.
To R-three.
And he's got, he's got a lot of steps to go through.
I've got a question that might be a little more procedural, but say we make a recommendation, this goes to council, and they approve the rezone, um, right now, there's obviously a commercial structure on the property. I, I don't think it's desirable to end up with a vacant commercial structure, but it rezoned R-three. Do we have any...
No, you don't, because you're just making a recommendation on the real estate itself, the land itself. Now, obviously, if it gets rezoned, that commercial structure would only be able to be used as R-three. So, I mean, I understand the, the concern, but there's really nothing that you can do about that.
So if somebody come in, if this deal fell through, and somebody come in to buy that building as a commercial building, they would, they could not use it for...
They would, no.
So they couldn't come back?
They would have to get it rezoned again, or they'd have to go to the BZA for variance.
Okay.
They could only use it for R-three purposes.
So as Rick said, this is just a procedural comment, but it's nice to clarify that, when we have, you don't see this every day. Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, are we have, what we could ask for, um, the people, the Ramon Straters didn't get to speak last meeting, they said...
I, I, I think if we didn't have, that's where I was going, if we didn't have any more questions for this gentleman, then...
Well, I do have one question. Mr. Bastin, last, last time you were here, that, have you ever done a project like this before? And what you answered was, you've been in business thirty-eight years, but you never did answer if you'd done a project exactly like this.
I've never built a townhome community like this with twenty-three units by demoing out an infill section inside of an existing city, no sir. But I've been in construction for thirty-eight years and done a lot of projects.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when we, just to make sure I'm clear, when, if, if we change the business zone, which would be the existing old IGA, and parking lot back to it, we're only changing those two lots, we're not, we're not changing any effect on the two rentals, pardon me.
Yes, yeah, you would be.
Would be.
Yeah.
So it'll be a one, one day, okay?
Yeah, so there's five lots, uh, each of those lots, so under your ordinance, in order to receive B, I'm sorry, R-three zoning, each parcel has to be at least ten thousand square feet, as far as size goes. Each of these five parcels are at least ten thousand square feet, all right? So you have the, he has the ability to come before you, ask him to, each individual parcel be rezoned to R-three, and that's what he's asking.
And that's some of the stuff that you and Mr. Strater, I had a meeting with him to make sure. And that's some of the stuff that you and Mr. Strater, at a meeting with him, make sure that all the boxes was checked. Thank you, thank you so much. I think that's all the questions that we have for you.
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, I just dot my i's and cross my t's, but your address is listed as 69 South Colfax, is that correct?
That's correct. Actually, it's North, North.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And for clarification for everybody, make sure I, I understand. The, the two single-family homes that are in question, they are currently zoned R2, which is medium-density residential. That's not a single-family home, is it?
No, it's medium-density, yes, R3.
So it's duplexes, basically.
So those two parcels in question? Excuse me, please. Those two parcels are currently zoned R2, medium-density residential.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's something that the Swabs family has probably done somewhere along the line.
And, and traditionally here, that would mean that those could be duplexes.
Correct.
Okay.
In other words, there could be two families living.
Yeah, not saying that they are, but they could be. Thank you.
And I'm sure that that's something that Mr. Schwab visioned down the road whenever he acquired the properties, because I believe he has several properties in that neighborhood. Okay, thank you. So now, I want to ask anybody that would like to speak for or against this project. And remember, as we've had a lot of our conversation, it's all about zoning. That's all we're concerned about tonight.
I understand.
And your name is?
Stacy Allen, and I have signed in.
Stacy Allen.
Casey.
Stacy.
Stacy.
S-T.
A-C-Y. I want to first get over with, Mr.?
And you do have two minutes.
Okay, then I have two other people who have ceded their time to me. Thing is, we have an arbitrary determination of two minutes without discussion or motions. So I have six minutes, thank you. Something, the idea of Mr. Vody said, the best and highest for this office. We all understand that eventually, this property is going to have to change. Our neighborhood understands that. This is not the right project to get this property changed. And here's to say a few things why. First of all, the idea that this is a dilapidated property. Do you love what Mr. Goss used that six different times last month? Dilapidated, dilapidated. It's not, it's empty. Seasonal business was in there this past summer. Last weekend, there was an indoor community yard sale in that building. There's no meth addicts crashing in there, this isn't a drug den, it's not falling down, it's empty. We wish it weren't. We wish there was a grocery store there. But it's not, and we know it's going to have to change. Something else, and, and the gentleman here started in on about their, their experience. They have three decades of building experience, but this is the first time they've built something for themselves. So they have no experience as property managers. This will be the first time they'll be managing property. And they're doing a big property for that. Three stories, townhouses, 23 of, originally it was 30, now it's 23. That's, you know, and they're two and three bedrooms. That's not singles, that's couples and families. Now, I want to come back to that. I want you to think about that property just for a second. We own the Marx, we know this property, you've driven past it dozens of times. Think about it just for a second. People turn left or right on South Street to go to the Walmart Plaza. They'll go straight towards south, go to Kroger or Day 69, go to north, downtown. Think about this, remember, Poston Road is to the south, Poston Road Elementary. About the same distance is John R. Wooden Middle School to the north. That is a very busy road. Sometimes, it's hard for us to get out of our driveways. It's hard to get out of our driveways. Now, with 23 townhouses, just with couples, that's 43 people. Now, how many people do you know, couples and families only have one car? It's just me and my wife, we have two. So that's at least 23 cars, probably at least 40. Add 40 new cars to that intersection, trying to, that is a zoning issue. 40 new cars trying to get in and out on that intersection. And remember, there's also that little side road that goes into the old plaza where it was Kroger used to be?
Or Kmart?
The Marshall's. I take that twice a day going to and from work. That people go down it all the time, all those buses, and now you're adding all those cars. Here's the one that gets me. Now, I've adjusted it to take the new 23. They're all couples, that's 43. We add the amount of kids, you're looking up to 75 people going to be crammed in to that property at that intersection. That's a zoning issue. And I'm asking on behalf of our neighborhood. Think of, you know, you talk about wanting it to fit in and, and be what, what goes with our neighborhood. Last business, last meeting, old business, we talked with a gentleman, a business owner downtown, who wanted to paint his building. And you had the discussion, was it brick, was it stone, was it plaster, was it masonry of some sort? And you had a long discussion of whether he should be able to paint it. Because you wanted it to fit with what the downtown was and to, to make sure that it was commensurate with everything that was down there. And the downtown is very beautiful, and when that courthouse gets done, our downtown is going to be gorgeous. And that was good. I am all for that thing. We're masking. What our neighborhood is asking, is that you give our neighborhood, where we live, that same consideration in this zoning request. There's not a three-story building in our area. And you're going to put up 23 townhouses that are three stories on a corner that's one of the busiest in our area? With the buses going twice a day, actually, three times a day because of the schedule where they go back out to the high school? With the downtown traffic, and people going to Walmart, to Kroger? Please spend at least that much consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You got a minute left? I'm sorry. You up next?
Yeah, I picked one of those. I live at 1190 South Main Street.
And your name is?
Bradley Anderson.
Bradley Anderson.
I've lived at that residence with my wife 40 years. And I see people, like you said, building these buildings, it's going to make a blind corner. There's at least 25 people a day running that stop sign, airway. See it all the time, stupid stuff like that. The IGA building. It's a rental, like, you know, he called a yard sale, I call it a secondhand shop anymore, but the other business that was in there, that gentleman had a long-term lease. He was paying $1,500 a month for the last three years and had a long-term lease on a gentleman's agreement, $1,500 a month for the whole year, not just for the two months that he was in there. So he, I had talked to him personally. He basically was asked to drop his lease, so that they could sell his property. I don't know what the reason is, why they have to do it, but that's their business, not mine. But where I live at, in my house, these apartments, it's where I went and built three-story townhomes there. I believe in home ownership, like you guys said, well, I go, I think people should own. I think if you're going to have something in town, I think they should own it. It shouldn't be a rental for a couple guys in Dorfens for some people to come in, raps some land, they don't set up, and make a fortune off of people forever. We got a lot of that going on, and it ends up being, rents are too high. People don't, can't stay in the rent, can't stay there, so when they can't keep them full, we start lowering the rent or we start second-hand. We had the same problem going on here a couple of years ago, councilwoman. The guy that owns the Marsh Building brought the same thing up, was going to do the same thing. These gentlemen have not told us anything about how much their rents were going to be to live there with all them children, they've got areas marked out for the dog parks, for the dogs to go poop in the yard.
Your time's up.
Put the yard in it, you know, I, I, I.
Thank you. Next?
I'll speak. I'm not comfortable public speaking, and you probably can hear me, but I'll speak.
You're fine, did you sign in?
I did not.
Okay, if you would.
Because I did not sign to speak.
Okay, well, you sign in. We'll make it as easy as we can for you. What is your name?
I am Mary Ryner, R-Y-N-A-R-D.
Ryner.
R-Y-N-A-R-D.
N-A-R-D. And Mary, you're a neighbor?
I did not receive a notice, which pissed me off, but I'm at 1159, and you're talking about 1190. Okay, forget that. What I want to say is that all the homes in the neighborhood were built the same year roughly I was, which is 1950. These are single-family, one-story, small residences. And I do not believe, again with the traffic, that this is the place to rezone anything more than what we have, which is doubles. And that's what I have to say. I've been there 37 years, half my life, and I'm the newcomer on the street. So I'm against, and do what you will. But in 10 or 15 years, we're going to all be dead and gone, and then you can tear down the neighborhood and put up whatever. Thank you.
Next? Did you already sign in?
Yeah.
And your name is?
Michelle Davis.
Michelle Davis.
Yeah, I'm connected to their area. I'm at 1180 South Maryland Street.
Okay.
So I'm next door to 1190. So the way it's scheduled to look, it'll be pointed right into my backyard. So that's, and right beside my house. So I do have concerns about the value that it's going to do to my home. And for my family, having, I don't know, all these homes peering into my grandkids and my kids, you know, when they're playing in the backyard. Yeah, and then I have, is this what's best for this area? Three-story building is huge whenever it comes to just having one-story houses all in that area. We already know, at least I know, the bad dealings this company, this person has already had in the past with other businesses. Unfinished projects, court suing, being sued by the state. You know, like, we, do we want that? Someone to be responsible for that big of an area? Being over all these people that are going to be renting off of them? You know, like, uh, let's see. Will the work be done in an adequate time? Is this the best use of this space? Already having issues with business plan and paperwork and everything else? Are they going to be able to get the spacing and everything under control? It's, the plumbing, the plumbing's always been an issue over there. The, the city has to come out every year and flush that system because it gets all backed up into all of our homes on that whole road. So how are you going to put all these people on that road? It just doesn't make sense. It's so many more people flushing and waste coming out of there. Let's see, uh, that's pretty much all I have, except for, you know, this business that he has now isn't the business that was, he was sued for, but this could have a big effect on our, in our city if you guys approve something so huge in such a small area, and then he gets to build on it and then doesn't finish this project and, and is in control of all these people's futures. You know, like, was it just not going to answer the phone whenever they call with an issue? You know, like, we just don't know, but it's proven, all you have to do is look it up, but this is something that he's known.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm the same owner as them, I'm stage fright, so.
Did you already sign in?
I have.
And your name is?
My name is David Eastwood, and I live at 1260 South Main, which is directly across from the old Save Lot. So they have touched on the issues that I was, this area is so congested right now. Right there at South Street and Main Street is the biggest intersection. School buses are running out to the high school, school buses are running to Poston Road Elementary, and school buses are running to, um, John R. Wooden Middle School. And so I've, I sit right there where I can see that stop sign, and that's not exaggerating how many people run that stop sign every single day. Every single day. I sit right there, my, I have a screen in port, so my wife and I plan on retiring and, and being able to look out there. Yeah, I do look at the Save Lot, but I knew that when I went into it. So, I mean, this is so congested right there. And he had touched on the parking, but according to this plan right here, there's 60 parking spaces. And that's, there's 60 cars that's going to be pulling in and out of there. I don't know how many people per unit that that, you know, all these units, but that's a lot of people. Like she touched on, it's like, my house was built in 1940. I've not had sewage back up into my house, but if it was to ever back up, it's going into my basement. So, you know, with that much flushing toilets, doing laundry, stuff like that, if it gets built, what, what kind of recourse do I have if the sewer backs up and now I have sewage that just filled my basement? And I'm just concerned about this high density. It's, the Save Lot right now is 13 foot eight tall. The proposed, as what Mr. Gossett had said, was a 30-foot tall building. So I, I brought a couple pictures, I don't know if anybody's even cares to look at it, but 13 foot eight compared to 30 foot, that's over twice its height. So my house is not going to get any sunshine. I'll never see another sunrise like I have on these pictures. And, I mean, it, it's just, you know, where's the snow going to go? If the sunlight doesn't get onto that road there at Main Street, it stays froze. There's no falling of any snow or ice. Right now, the city pushes, they push the snow, of course, there's nowhere else to put it. So they push the snow down Main Street, and it goes into my yard and my sidewalk. So these units, if they push the snow out, where are they going to push it to? Out there on the road and then make the city push it back into my yard and my sidewalk? And I clear this, I clear the sidewalk off every winter because there are people that have wheelchairs down to that area. And there's a lot of school kids walk down that sidewalk. Every winter, I go out there and I clear that sidewalk off.
Well, your time's up. I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Next? Did you sign in?
Yeah, I signed in here, my name's Nicholas Davis, I live at 118.
Nicholas Davis.
Yes, sir. Uh, my wife touched on a, one big thing for me. We had had plumbing issues back last spring. I had to rent an auger from Innapinch, and I ran 85-foot a line through my, my cleanout and never hit a tree root or anything. And I didn't know what to do, I called a plumbing friend of mine, he said, well, if, if your problem's not your cleanout, then it's got to be the city sewer. So I, I took it upon myself to go to the manhole cover and lifted it up. And sure enough, the sewer was about eight inches from, from flowing out of the manhole cover. and sure enough, the sewer was about eight inches from, from flowing out of the manhole cover. And I just had a couple, uh, concerns the last meeting we had. What are thirty more units on that corner there gonna do to the infrastructure of the neighborhood? Um, I'm not opposed to, to ridding the neighborhood of blight or upgrading the neighborhood in any, any way or shape, but, uh, I find it a little absurd to say you're going to build three-story structures in a residential neighborhood. And, uh, my, my main concern is my privacy. Uh, somebody here alluded to, um, the fact that we were gonna have, uh, three-story buildings right up to my property line. Well, that is a severe invasion of my privacy and I'm just wondering where, you know, where my privacy rights begin. Uh, that's, that's really all I have to say. Every, everything else has been touched upon.
I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak? For or against? Dale, I would like to have your input on the, what could be put in to the B-two retail business? So, so the planning commission knows. The, this is your businesses that could go into that existing building. Is there?
Not just the building, the lots that, that, that it is on.
Correct.
Including across South Street.
So, in B-two local business, representative uses would be retail business establishments such as appliance stores, auto accessory stores, bakeries, small grocery store, convenience market, book or stationery store, cafe or restaurant, camera or photographic supply, laundromats, laundry, ice cream or candy store, delicatessen, offices, drugstore, fabric shop, floor covering store, flora shop, gift shop, haberdashery or women's ready-to-wear shop, hardware or paint store, hobby shop, jewelry store, meat market, shoe store, variety store, branch bank, funeral home, barber shop, beauty shop, church, and schools.
So that building could be sectioned out and there could be a lot of traffic in and out of there like whenever Swab's IGA.
That's correct.
Dale, couldn't it also be an automatic car wash, a bait shop?
Uh, probably. That was just the representative uses. We do have a table in our ordinance as well, uh, which is table one, primary authorized uses. So that's gonna get you some more examples of what could be put in to B-two, um.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it possible that you could put inside storage, inside a building?
Uh, storage is a different category, I think, under our ordinance. Self-storage, um, is a different category than B-two.
So what I wanted the commission members to know there is that most of us have lived here for a long time and we've seen, obviously, the Save-A-Lot. I know when Swab's was there, it was a main hub. Has been thirty-plus years, I think. And South Street's not, was not traveled as much as it is now. So, uh, again, what we're doing tonight is rezoning, asking for a favorable or non-favorable to send to City Council on this property.
Gary. Gary.
So if.
On behalf of the city.
So is anybody, if you've got any other questions, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I don't have any questions, Joe, but if we look at our comprehensive plan, it says residential. If you look at that, it says the district. I don't know if anybody looked at that besides you looked at it, right?
Yes.
Yes, it says the district's primarily intended for single-family residential housing where traditional subdivisions of low to medium densities are allowed. Developments must be connected to the water and sewer utilities. On a case-by-case basis, the city should also consider increased density in that district. This could be in the form of two-family homes, triplexes, quadplexes, or similar structures. And here's the, my wording, or the wording of this, that fit in the neighborhood context. So I, I think, you know, I mean, I think we really have to look at what the comprehensive plan says.
I'll comment on this as well, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think I've, I've tried to be very consistent in my stance. I think that there is a need for dedicated, purpose-built rental housing in our community. Um, our non-owner occupancy rate is higher than the state average and it may be outside of our purview here, but if the city can do something to promote owner occupancy, single-family residences, I'm for that. We have, and that's what I mean, we have a lot of single-family homes that are non-owner occupied. Those are rentals.
Correct.
And I'm not trying, there is a correlation. You can drive down the street and, I, I, I don't like making blanket statements, but you would have pretty good odds of choosing what is a rental and what is owner occupied. There's pride of ownership. That's why my stance has been, I would, I would rather see dedicated apartment rentals so that those, single-family residence, residences can be purchased and owner occupied. I don't, I don't have a great grasp on what our role in that is, but that's why I've tried to be consistent on the, the need for apartments. Um, that being said, I'm very sympathetic to the co, the public comments tonight. I have multiple, um, four-family, uh, four-family quadplexes, I'll say, um, in an R-two neighborhood. Only one of those four is currently zoned R-three the proper way. But I've got three within a baseball throw of me that are zoned improperly. Um, and I, I share some of the same head-shaking moments as the public does with, with some of this. Um, so I'm, I don't, I guess, I, I, this, this one is, I wanna be consistent in my stance. I think my, I'm hesitant to, I guess my biggest drawback on this is that there is currently a commercial building there. In a perfect world, it'd be a vacant lot. And if it's a vacant lot, it fits, it fits the comprehensive plan to change it from business to residential. And I don't think there's any question about that. Um, it worries me that there's a building there and, and we rezon it and it could end up being some sort of apartment complex in and of itself.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I also am very sympathetic to all the people that were here speaking tonight. Um, not easy to do, to stand up publicly and, and share your feelings and your emotions about this. Um, important issue to where you live in your home. I live in town. I, I appreciate that. Um, looking at the comprehensive plan, it does encourage mixed land uses. It encourages us to consider compact design versus taking farmland and, and growing in that direction. Um, it talks, the comprehensive plan talks about creating a range of housing types and opportunities, walkable neighborhoods. Um, certainly, is this compatible, is, is the potential to have an apartment community compatible with your neighborhood? Maybe not with single-family homes, but Main Street, um, as it was pointed out, there are a couple of schools within a stone's throw of you. There is a large shopping center that hopefully will get rehabbed at some point. Um, there's a cemetery down the street, so it's not, it's not a suburban development. Um, it is in town and it's on Main Street. Arguably, it's an eyesore. You, you may disagree with that, but it's certainly underutilized as it sits. So those are all issues that come from the comprehensive plan that ask us to, to evaluate those when we think about changing the zoning. Thank you.
And my take on it is that the Swab family is obviously selling lots of properties after Mr. Swab has passed away. So, whether this is rezoned or somebody else comes before us and buys this, Swab's is going to sell this, one way or another. Rick, you had a very good point there. Thank you. Steve, thank you for your input. So do we have a, a entertaining motion?
I entertain a motion to deny docket number two-five-zero-two-six based on the situation with the drainage in the area. I, I have noticed before too, that after a heavy rain, that area is, there's a lot of standing water. And so if this gentleman has a problem with his, you know, if he's had a problem with drainage at his house, I think obviously, you know, the proposed apartments, um, would just exacerbate the situation. So I entertain a motion to deny.
And Miller made a motion to deny? Is there a second? Yeah, it's, that would be a non-favorable. It would be a non-favorable recommendation.
Non-favorable, sorry, non-favorable recommendation.
Joe, if I could say something before we, we vote on this.
We have a motion, but no second.
So you can't talk?
Okay.
So do we have a second?
I'll second so that we can have a continued discussion and then we'll get to a vote. Steve Bodie.
Okay.
So Steve Bodie seconds the motion to deny the request.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we ask the city to share whatever thoughts they have about the issue in front of us?
Mr. Schrader, do you have any?
Not this time. I, I've, uh, worked with this group. They've, uh, Mr. Coffey was a part of that. Uh, we've sat down and went through the process, so the, the planning here is put together.
And this is just a rezoning? So things like sewage and water runoff and all that stuff will be addressed at a later date?
I, I think I would like to clarify and, and I'd like to make a statement on, you were talking about water and so forth. I believe that these people are talking about sewage. Okay, is that clarifying?
Yes, sir.
See, 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 he's not wrong.
He's correct.
No, that's, yeah, that's true as well as the model for their, sorry, their.
My, um, part of our plan shows a, a margin of free development.
We can't have no more discussion.
No. I think we all, I don't know, but I, I wanna keep this property, I would like to see this property residential. Okay, I mean, you drive through there, yes, I totally agree that there's, there's one two-story house, there's one, one story and a half house in that whole neighborhood. And I wanna keep it residential.
We've got a motion on the floor.
Well, I thought we were discussing the motion. No.
Yeah, you got a second, so now you can have discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, will, may we ask Gary Oaks to share?
Uh, Mr. Bodie, I, I don't think that's a good idea given certain potential conflicts, so no, I would say no.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I, I, I think we wanna keep it residential. The question becomes, does it, we try to do it to R-three, you know, and that's what's before us? So, uh, you know, later on, we can, maybe we can control as a, the, the commission, the different things that go the height, the whole nine yards at that, at a later date. If we don't change it to residential, then at any time, right, right now, you can put a liquor store in there or a car wash and without coming before this commission. So, you know, it's, it's a balancing act for us folks, you know, I, I can hear what you're saying, but do you want one or the other? I don't know. And like Joe said, you know, I think they're liquidating their stuff and so they can sell to the highest bidder, so. I'd like to see it go residential.
Is that guaranteed that it would be a townhouse? If we, if we, if we change what the, what the residential, where the, the business of residential, is that guaranteed it would be a townhouse?
Well, what would be guaranteed is anything under R-three would then be able to be built on each individual parcel. So, uh, under your ordinance with R-three, it states this district designates the most densely developed multifamily residential units. It includes multifamily uses consisting of three or more units with minimum lot size based on the number of dwelling units in a building. The requirements as to minimum size of lots in ground-floor area buildings are less than those specified for other residential uses. And then we have various tables with the ordinance that talks about, you know, the, the amount of square footage per lot. You got setback requirements that have to be met. You've got all, you've got height requirements of what can be built within the R-three zoning.
So that would come back in a different?
They would have to comply with all that, yes.
Okay.
Traditionally, an apartment community.
And like I said, I don't disagree with the Swab building and the parking lot. Don't disagree with that at all. Since I said that from the beginning. It's just like everybody has said, does this really fit in? Now, am I against them putting houses there or apartments there, whatever? No, not at all. But not in the, the capacity that it looks as of now. That would be my only.
And that stuff that would come back before us?
That's right.
After they draw the steps.
That's right.
So that's not anything that we're
Right.
concerned with tonight.
You're, you're correct. I was just saying that for our contractor.
Can you verify though, if you go to R-three?
You can't, sir, it's not, public hearing is over. This is now discussion.
You're, you're talking about.
Sir, this is discussion with the, uh, can, can commission members only at this time of meeting.
Don't care about that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
No, no, sir. So we've got a mo, motion on the floor. We've got a second. Marilyn, would you, and this is to send a unfavorable recommendation to City Council?
Can you remind us of voting yes, what that means, and voting no, what it means?
Yes would be that you agree with the unfavorable?
Recommendation.
Recommendation. And no would be that you don't agree with the unfavorable. I'll call Marilyn off guard.
Richard Bastin?
Yes.
Steve Bodie?
No.
Jim Burkhart?
No.
Joe Disney?
No.
Rick, Rick Dernall?
No.
Ann Miller?
Yes.
Yes? Jason Scott?
No.
And myself? No.
That motion?
Six, six no's.
So that, so that motion failed. Six to two was the vote on the un-recommended. So then it goes to council.
Then you can, you can ask if anybody has a different motion.
Okay, if I have a different motion?
I do, Chairman. I, I would move that we recommend for approval docket PC number two-five-zero-one-seven to change the zoning to R3.
Isn't it two-six though, not two-seven?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two-six.
Two-five-zero-two-six.
And you said what now, Steve, I'm sorry?
That we, um, make a motion to recommend to City Council that the properties in question be rezoned to R3.
When do we roll call?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who, who seconded? Did somebody second that? Jim Burkhart, a second?
Okay, so the second vote, Rick Bastin?
No.
No. Steve Bodie?
Yes.
Jim Burkhart?
Yes.
Joe Disney?
Yes.
Rick Dernall?
Yes.
Ann Miller?
No.
Jason Scott?
Yes.
And myself? Yes.
So that vote is six to two with Mr. Heaton abstaining.
Six to two.
So the motion carries docket number PC two-five-zero-two-six. The rezoning of B2 and R2 to R3, we will send to City Council for a favorable recommendation on rezoning. Okay, so new business, Rick Dernall wants to discuss procedural.
Okay, um, I don't, I don't like doing this because I don't, heaven knows I, I make plenty of mistakes in my job, uh, try, just try to limit them. I, part of my preparation for this role has been to, um, view other plan commission meetings as well as attend some in person, so, um, I think last month highlighted an issue that we could just avoid going forward. I think it's kind of obvious, we, we need to know at the start of a meeting if public notice requirements have been met or not. The, the situation last month was avoidable in the context that if the mailings did not meet the requirements, that could have been announced right at the onset of the meeting, and an announcement made that anybody here to, to participate in that docket number, we won't be, we would not be hearing that at this meeting, please look for further, um, further notice. So I, I just think it, it's important to state that here. I don't know whose responsibility that ultimately falls on. I do know that, you know, we're a smaller municipality, so I'm not, we don't necessarily have the budget or the staff as a larger plan commission might. But I think moving forward, it would be nice to know at the beginning that each docket number has met their requirements to actually be on the docket at that meeting. So, just wanted to kind of clear the air on that. The second thing is, without going into detail, um, our downtown commercial historic district petitions, how would I put this? I think the expectation should be that every petition comes in with the same information to us. If they're going to do changes to the facade, we probably, or, or a new construction, we probably need to see renderings of what we're, you know, across the board. Doesn't matter who the petitioner is, just, it needs to be consistent. I just think that's, should go without saying, but it needs to be said, so. I think that's all I really had.
Are you saying, Rick, that, that, uh, that it should show on the renderings, this is going to be, continue to be, oh, this will continue, this is going to be wood, this is going to be wood or whatever?
I think there's a disparity in some of the renderings that we've seen recently. We've seen some very good ones, and then we've seen some handwritten floor plans.
This also would apply to things like signage in the downtown district?
True.
Where we've sometimes had, you know, a, a mark of a sign that we could see, and other times it's been described to us.
Yeah. I just, I, I, I don't want to see us get ourselves into any type of trick bag. I mean, right now, let's face it, it's not a, government is not only a, not always a great term right now. And public trust is important. I mean, I, I talk with the public every day of my job, and I don't want to break that trust, and I think any third pers- any third-party person should look at our decisions, and even if they don't agree with our decision, they understand where we're coming from, and why we make the decisions. I mean, Mr. Bodie, you kind of alluded to that earlier. There should be some transparency, and, and I just, when we have, I think the downtown commercial historic district petitions probably show the largest disparity in what information we've provided. Some of them, I mean, the signs, that's all we're concerned about, are the signs. We don't really need to see the interior, that's not, I mean, as I understand, all of the upper floors are zoned residential to begin with, so I, I don't need to see what they're doing inside, it is nice to see it. But we need to see what the exterior of the building looks like. Because if, if our, if our charge as plan commissioners for that district is to make sure that, that build, new construction and remodels are, uh, congruent with the neighboring properties, we probably ought to see those on a consistent basis, so.
Well, I think a lot of times the petitioner is bringing us interior plans of what they're doing, where we don't need to see that, because that's what we have Mr. Schrader for.
Yeah.
He sees those, and he works with them. Am I not correct in that?
That's correct.
And, and Rick, how, how do we accomplish this, or all of us? I mean, how do we accomplish this? I mean, we have to, it's, it's too late when they walk up to that podium next month with a petition and no rendering. We need Bob and his department to be able to share some consistent message on what is needed, right?
I think so, I mean, if, if, if we're not, none of us like to be given information up here.
For the first time.
For the first time.
Yes.
We know, I mean, at the same time, I think we're all, we, we try to be sympathetic, I mean, if it's something that I can process quickly, I don't like sitting up here feeling like a gatekeeper and, and delaying something that ultimately I'm going to agree with. But we need a consistent message passed on to the petitioners, that this is the information we need, we need it in a timely manner so that we can make informed decisions.
Suggestion I might make, and maybe something that you guys don't want to hear with additional possible workload on you, but I think in regards to the downtown district and, and wanting to have a consistency in what you want to see if someone comes, whether it be a sign or whether it be the front of their facade of the building, it would probably be hooved to get an application together. And that application would outline everything that is going to be expected of that applicant. And if they don't have everything on that application, then the office downstairs will tell them, you're not going on the agenda because you don't have everything. So really, that's probably where it lies for this particular issue, is to have that application process in place. And that really, I think, would then put before you, at least for this particular request, something that you guys can guarantee, all right, each month, we know if we've got something on the agenda that's downtown-related, they've had to fill out that application, and someone has looked and seen what it is they have submitted.
So with that said, can I ask for a subcommittee to get together? Just like we do with the sign ordinance, but we won't involve any city council members? Like to ask anybody?
And I mean, this is, this will be a little bit different than what you guys did with the sign ordinance, because what you're, what you're going to be basing it on is you're going to, you already have a, a ordinance in place, you know what your ordinance says, okay? So you're basically just looking at what the law is, and you're saying, all right, on this application, here's what I want to see. But, you know, I want to see renderings, and these renderings need to be, and you can specify what do you want to see? You want to see 3D pictures of it? Do you, I mean, have, what is it, how detailed do you want it? Because that's something that you're allowed to do under the ordinance itself. Okay? So you're not asking for the council to change orders or anything, you're just basically developing a application that complies with the ordinance.
So a subcommittee, uh, I think I'd like to see an odd number of people. If you'd like to volunteer for that, I'll take that. Subcommittee would meet here in chambers?
Well, the other thing I'd like to see is, Rick's point's perfect, Dale's is too. But when that comes in front of us, that signage that they want to put on there, it needs to be, it needs to fit the signage recommendations before they ever, don't even bring it to us, because I don't, I don't want to do it again. So if it's not fitting, if, whomever looks at this and goes, nope, it's not in ordinance, then they need to start over.
Classic example is the community foundation. They came in with a sign that was too big?
Yeah.
So if, uh...
So if we're looking at it and goes, we already know that this fits, we're good on that part of it.
So we'd be looking at making it a form, an application, to give to the building department of expectations that we want to see. Am I saying that right, Mr. Dernall?
Yeah. This would be for the downtown area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Although I, Joe, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to being part of that, but the problem is this Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm pretty busy, so I can't, you know, what I'm saying is, so, you know...
We don't have to do it in the month of October, we can do it in the month of Sep- November. We don't have a meeting in December. Am I correct in that, Mr. Dernall?
I believe you are, but I would defer to this side, which you might have a better idea.
But anyway, I, I, I...
So Mr. Burkhart would be on that subcommittee?
I possibly could, could, would help also, um, if Rick Dernall will.
Twist my arm, I'm not doing anything else, so.
So we got Rick?
Rick's the most thoughtful.
Well, and you know, Rick is the one that brought it out. So Rick should be the one that chairs the subcommittee. Although you can be, refer that to Steve Bodie if you'd like, yeah. I can be part of it as well. So we got Jim Burkhart?
Well, if, if Jason wants to take my place, that's fine, he said he'd be part of it, so I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we're changing those up. Like Jason Scott is on the subcommittee, with Steve Bodie?
Okay.
And Rick Dernall.
Okay, three.
And you three work it out when you can get together, and then whenever you get something ready, then you can bring it back to us so we can look at it.
Does that work? Real quick, Mr. Coffey, that, the subcommittee, um, rules that we need to apply to that? Do we meet in public?
No, you would not need to be in public, because you're going to report back to the full commission. And the full commission then at a public meeting would vote on what you're, what you're proposing.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Anything else in conversation?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's my turn to speak now then.
Okay.
My job is planning director for the city of Minneapolis, contrary to my legal esteemed colleagues shutting me down, I think there were points that needed to be made that we didn't recognize. First, on this most recent project, I would have told you that it's an abandoned building and has been abandoned for over six years now. Something needs to be known. I would tell you the majority of the homes in that neighborhood, immediate neighborhood, are rentals. The Fett Swab family owns the six on Maryland Street that are behind the project, and those are all rentals. Across the street on the west side of Main Street, four of them, two of those are, three of those are B3, B2 businesses already, and, uh, four down through there are rentals. At the end of the same street, Main Street, are the two doubles, there are actually four doubles, that are two-story units with a hip roof on, making those within four foot of the height of what was proposed. Those are the kind of things I'm supposed to look at before they come to you. We talked about traffic studies, I looked at the traffic involved in this, the traffic would be involved with thirty homeowners is less than you have with a commercial property in and out of property, partial covenant, and one all day long, so that's, there's a difference there. Later on, the issue's at sewers, I don't know why Dale didn't cut that off, but anyway, that's not part of the zoning consideration that we're even discussing at that point. So we have enough of those things that we need to do, I think we can handle that. Workforce development housing needed to be explained. Workforce development housing is generally defined as teachers, firemen, that kind of an income level, that didn't be a start home for them, that's our problem in the city, it's a problem nationwide of urban housing.
Gary, you have a conflict of interest in these.
My job is planning director.
I understand, but you have a conflict of interest. You cannot give your input to this commission when you have a conflict of interest.
Every job that I bring forward...
I love your work... I love your work, Gary. I love your work. But when you have a conflict of interest, you put the city of Martinsville at risk, sir.
I have the city of Martinsville.
And I love your work. There's a reason that we asked you to stand down.
Tell me what that is. What is the conflict?
Gary, we're not going to get into that right now.
Do we have anything else? Okay, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Make a second. Jason Scott, make a second. We are adjourned. Thank you. Shut up.